We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Santa Rosa City School Board of Education Meeting for November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we are going to begin with our land acknowledgement. And let's bring over Madonna Feather Cruz.
President Fong, the attendees are still popular. Oh, there she is. I will bring her over.
Madonna, are you there? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Could you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes. I'm going to introduce you, Madonna. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Madonna Feather Cruz is named after Aunt Madonna Thunderhawk, and she was born in Ucaya to Denise Nightfeather and Walter Feather. Madonna is an enrolled member of the Round Valley Indian Reservation in Covelo, California, and on her father's side Lakota Sioux. Culture's been part of her life since she was born, and she's married to her high school sweetheart, and have two outstanding children, all living in Sonoma County. Madonna is very committed to her Native American people, currently serving as president to the Indian Education Parent Committee with Santa Rosa City Schools. She's director for KBBF Radio. She's vice chairman to Yakama Indian Education and Development Incorporated. I think your picture showed you standing in front of there, and community advisor member to the Antis and Uncles Project on the Eagle Council with Sonoma County Indian Health Project. She has created and facilitates DSLC's first virtual Native American talking circle held every Tuesday. Madonna has been serving on various nonprofit boards since her teenage years, and being of service to her family and community is most important, and you're of service to our school board in Santa Rosa City Schools tonight. So thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you so much for that introduction tonight. I hope you guys are all well and have some water next to you. Hoping your meeting doesn't go very long. I myself have been in a two-day conference for disability rights here in California, so glad to be here tonight with you guys and give this land acknowledgement. And people ask me, you know, what could we do? You know, what else can we do besides this one little piece? And, you know, people say equity, equity, equity. You have to hire natives. So that is my next steps, hire natives. So with that, relatives tonight, I would like to acknowledge that we are located on the ancestral home of the Southern Pomo people, past, present, and future. And we recognize them as the first people and the first stewards of this land. And we just want to honor them tonight. So I thank you, relatives, and I hope you guys have a nice meeting.
Oh, thank you. We're relatives. Thank you very much. I feel like one of the aunties. Thank you, Madonna. Let's stand together and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to ground ourselves tonight by making a comment and a question and a very perplexing thing to me. In our county, in our community, we have in the past couple of weeks heard some news that was quite disturbing, and it had to do with individuals who are working in our county, our county government, who are leaving because they felt that it wasn't a comfortable place for them. They felt that there are racist attitudes and comments going on, and we also lost a prospective employee to our county for the same reason. And I don't know the story. I, you know, there's way more to this than anyone knows. But it struck me as a school board, as president of the school board, and as a trustee, and I can't speak for all our trustees, but you can speak for themselves if they'd like to, but it's disturbing that we live here in our county where we are to feel safe, to do our very best work, and our very best work is to take care of our children. That is our job. That is what we were elected to do. Our staff, that is what their chosen profession has been, and we cannot keep our adults safe. Our adults have voices. And for them to feel othered and oppressed in this way is hurtful. It's painful, and it's scary. And so we have little ones, we have teenagers who are impressionable, who quiet themselves, who step back, who don't say anything. What are their experiences? If we have to continue, I want to keep continuing to pay attention to what is happening to people who are silent, or it's just the norm. It's dangerous. And I pledge, and this board, I'm sure, will also pledge to continue to do this work, to recognize and to call it out whenever we see it, and to stop it when we see it. So I'm grateful for this time to be able to say that. And I will continue to eyes open. Thank you. All right, there is no actions. Taken closed session tonight for reporting, nothing considered in closed session for action in open session. Board members, are there any statements of abstention tonight? On any item, I see no hands. Board members, are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? Again, I see no hands up. And Beth, would you please ask our public if there's anything that they'd like to pull from the consent agenda to speak to?
Sure. So, members of the public, if there are any items in the F section of the agenda, that is the consent items section of the agenda that you would like to comment about, now is the time to pull that item for comment later in the meeting, toward the end of the meeting. So now would be the time to say if there's an item, an F item, that you would like to comment on. Please raise your hand. And there are no hands raised.
Thank you. It's now time to open this to public comment on non-agenda items, and Beth, I'll let you take that over to.
So as is our practice, we're going to ask students first to raise their hands if they would like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda tonight. Any students out there for public comment on non-agenda items? And now, anyone at all, anyone in the public who'd like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, this is the time to do that. And it looks like our first comment, we have, do we have two minutes for public comment, President Fong? I couldn't hear you.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes, we are going to do two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So our first public comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute time limit, and we will have a clock for you, is Rowan Faria. Rowan, are you there? All right, we're going to go next to Liz Birch.
Hi, I hope this is not on the agenda. I read as fast as I could. Right now, here are the facts about COVID-19. According to the CDC, there have been at least a quarter of a billion cases. That's two hundred and fifty million cases reported in the world. Five million people have died from it. Out of that, seven hundred thousand were American citizens. That's almost double the number of Americans who died in World War II. In the most recent wave of the virus driven by the more contagious Delta variant and the relaxation of social distancing distance measures, cases increased across all groups, but more children have been testing positive relative to older adults. Of the six point five million children in the US who contracted COVID-19 during the course of the pandemic, approximately seven hundred have died. Some children have developed a rare but serious disease that's linked to COVID-19 called multi-system inflammatory syndrome. Millions of people in the United States have received COVID-19 vaccines since they were authorized. The vaccines have undergone and will continue to undergo the most intensive safety monitoring in US history. A growing body of evidence has shown that these vaccines are safe and effective. Before recommending COVID-19 vaccination for children, scientists conducted clinical trials. Some people have had no side effects from the vaccine. Many people have reported side effects that go away within a couple of days. There is no evidence that COVID-19 vaccines cause fertility problems. The benefits clearly outweigh the risks. I just want to finish by saying that as long as people refuse to become vaccinated, variants will develop that will decrease the efficacy of the vaccines that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tina Rogers. Tina, are you there?
Yes, hi. Hello. My name is Kelly Clark, and I attended Brook Hill Elementary School, Rincon Valley Junior High School, and graduated from Santa Rosa High. In addition, my son Asante attended Brook Hill Elementary School, Slater Middle School, and graduated from Heiner. I am honored to be speaking to you this evening as the newest member of the Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Celebration Committee. On behalf of myself and the MLK Junior Committee, I would like to thank you all for your passion, dedication, and commitment to giving the best education to all students in our community. We would also like to thank President Fong for highlighting this year's virtual event. Our goal is to reestablish student participation while increasing family and community involvement. My mother, Pat Clark, was a dedicated teacher at Brook Hill Elementary School for thirty-four years. Prior to being hired by Santa Rosa City Schools, she and other educators and administrators, primarily women of color, helped implement the first Sonoma County Head Start Program in Windsor, California. In nineteen eighty-five, a small group of Santa Rosa City School employees, community activists, and church leaders founded the first Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Celebration Committee, which also formulated and implemented the first Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Celebration Event in Sonoma County. These Santa Rosa City School employees,
Pat Clark's daughter, Kelly Clark.
Recent Santa Rosa City School employees were not just made up of black teachers and administrators, but also janitorial engineers, construction engineers, and landscapers, who were dedicated employees that believed in the importance of equal rights, equity, and optimal education for all students. This original group hoped to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's legacy of love, unity, justice, and peace by holding an elementary, middle, and high school contest. The theme of the school's contest was based on the Dr. King Junior quote. This was followed by a celebration on the eve of his birthday with cultural performances and keynote speakers to honor and recognize the student winners, as well as to bring the community together to remember Martin Luther King Junior's dream.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your two minutes are up. So perhaps you could email the board with the rest of your comments, if you had other comments to make about that event. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Mike Vanderporten.
Good evening. I've got a different thing to bring to your attention tonight. I'd like to know how many of you think you know what, how Montgomery High School was named? Who is it named? You know? See a few hands. And you probably know that, or those who do know, know that it was named for a guy named Billy Montgomery. And his name really was Andrew Billy Montgomery. That's his legal name. And William actually became his nickname, or a kind of a formalized nickname. We think, or many people think, that Billy Montgomery was the first Santa Rosen killed in World War II. Yes, he died at Pearl Harbor on December seventh, and we're coming up on the eightieth anniversary of that date. So we need to stand back and honor Billy Montgomery. But what I do want to bring to your attention is there was another Santa Rosen, another Santa Rosa High School graduate who also died on that date. And his name is probably known to none of us, or none of you. His name was George Frederick Maybe. He was ten years older than Billy Montgomery, and he had lived in the community and worked with his father for ten years before he ended up in the Navy. And he actually died aboard the USS Arizona. So he was killed very early in the attack there at Pearl Harbor, while William Montgomery, or Billy Montgomery, was on the USS California. The USS California was actually, it obtained or incurred its most damage quite a bit later during the battle. So it's actually probably likely that George Maybe was the first Santa Rosen to die in the battle. So we're coming up on that eightieth anniversary. This is the last meeting you have before that December seventh anniversary. So I'll invite you to consider the two young men who we all lost and all of those others that we lost in World War II. I hope you'll consider honoring him down the road. Thank you.
That's very appropriate, Mike, especially Veterans Month, Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, public comment on a non-agenda item is Karen Wagner.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say hi to everyone and everybody on the board and the community. I'm a special ed assistant at Santa Rosa City Schools. I started my career twenty-four years ago, eighteen years with Santa Rosa City Schools. So I just want to let you guys know that if you have a heart for working with children, there certainly is a need, and these kids are wonderful. The departments are wonderful. And we certainly could use your help. So even if it's part-time, full-time, we have a lot of positions open. So if you would consider it, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item shall be Pryor.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's appropriate that Ms. Fong today opened up with talking about this article that was in the newspaper. It was mentioned in today's article that Sonoma County Board of Supervisors hired Allegra De La Cruz to lead the Office of Equity. Ms. De La Cruz has constantly pushed her own political agendas ahead of what's best for minorities. So I'm confused as to how she is employed in her current role. I regularly give public comments at the Santa Rosa City School Board meeting to discuss the vaccination divide. President Fong and Vice President McCormick have shared deposit sentiments for the right to choice. Ms. De La Cruz has tirelessly advocated for mandatory inoculations for all and wishes to strip away our civil rights of personal autonomy. Admits De La Cruz wishes to be a slave to the government, she has every right to do so. However, she should not be forcing other minorities into the same position. As a black man, I find this to be very concerning, being that I frown upon slavery. I want the board to also know that other districts of California have taken a stance against the mandate. They could do the same, but instead want to push their own ideologies on others. Something else that's interesting to me is that you started this meeting with talking about this very article. We do definitely share difference in opinion when it comes to this issue of vaccination. But understand it, it affects people of color and minority far greater than any other group. We make up one eighth or less of the population here. Take that into consideration.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Natalie Hoyt.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I just wanted to chime in on it. The Santa Rosa City has recently passed an ordinance to encourage more composting, so that it will be required for businesses as well as residential homes to get rid of all their food waste through compost. And I'd just love to see that implemented in our schools as well. So I'm not sure if there's any plan for that, or I don't think that you fall under the ordinance, but I would love to see Santa Rosa City Schools be proactive and really make that move. I recently volunteered on my daughter's school campus and was pretty horrified, honestly, by the amount of trash everywhere and also just food waste and everything. I didn't, there wasn't even a recycling bin out. Everything's going into one trash can. That's a lot of waste with all those kids. So I would love to see the board take a stance and really do something about that. I think that if we want to have a better future and we want people to be composting and recycling, we got to start with teaching our children to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, appreciation to people who took time out to speak to us tonight. We are going to move on right now to CSCE report.
If there's a representative from CSCE this evening, could you please raise your hand? President Fong, it looks like there's no report this evening.
And is there a report tonight from the Santa Rosa Teachers Association?
Yes, I will be bringing over Ms. Howell.
All right, great.
Hi, good evening, everyone. President Fong, Superintendent Trinell, it's good to see you tonight, everyone on the board. I'm Catherine Howell, president of SRTA, Santa Rosa Teachers Association, representing about eight hundred and fifty educators in Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm going to start tonight with some gratitude towards the teachers, our educators, for their dedication, for doing their jobs, for doing other people's jobs in the absence of substitutes and unfilled positions, and just for generally going the extra mile every minute of every day. And, and at risk of sounding like a broken record, we all know we're right there in the middle of a staffing crisis. Thanks for the increased pay for guest teachers. We're hoping that will make a difference at our school sites. Also, I hope the job fair brought people in and will get some people to step up at the short term. Obviously, long-term, we also have issues, unfilled positions in the district. You know, teachers that just don't, aren't there, kids that have had substitutes since the beginning of the school year, because we simply don't have people applying for the jobs in our district. And that sort of begs the question, what do we do? How do we bring them in? How do we keep them in our district? And I hope that that will be part of the discussion tonight when you're talking about the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, the three, almost about three point four million dollars. And we have a few suggestions from SRTA that we use the money to attract and retain some long-term people into the district in a couple of different ways. First, I'm going to say build our mentor network. Our new teachers need mentors. We can use some of this money to double mentor stipends, which are shockingly low. A teacher that agrees to take on a student teacher from Sonoma State gets one hundred dollars. Period. And then once things are deducted, they get about ninety-eight dollars for taking on a student teacher. Larger stipends for induction and interns, but still, we could use some of this money to double the mentor stipends and get some really truly good mentors in there to keep people in this profession. Let's target our PD to the greatest need. One thing that comes to mind is traditional, or sorry, transitional kindergarten expansion. Those teachers are going to need early childhood education courses that they might not have. Let's create those courses in Santa Rosa City Schools, and let's let our kindergarten teachers, our elementary teachers, take those classes so that when we are ready to expand our TK classes, we have teachers that are prepared to fill those jobs. Let's build a network of bilingual educators. How can we attract bilingual student teachers into our schools and keep them? How do we create a network so they feel supported and give them opportunity in Santa Rosa City Schools through professional development or networking or mentors that will encourage them to stay here? Let's let teachers teach teachers. Last year, dozens and dozens, maybe even hundreds of hours of courses were offered by Santa Rosa City Schools teachers. Every Wednesday morning, I signed up for a class taught by one of my coworkers. We don't need to pay for expensive consultants. Let's use the massive brain power and professionalism that we already have in the district. Let's offer some of these PD opportunities after school, on Saturdays, or even create an old-fashioned buyback day, an optional PD day that people can attend and be paid there per diem, or maybe if it doesn't fit into their family life, not attend at all. But let's make sure that it's not release time that teachers can't attend, that there's no substitutes. So don't schedule PD in the middle of a school day that teachers can't get to. And finally, let's make sure that all the educators at all the grade levels are included in these plans, in the plans for this professional development, so that we can have innovative opportunity for everyone and create classes and courses and develop professional development that's going to benefit everyone in the district. And I hope you take some of these suggestions to heart as you're discussing this topic tonight, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, President Howell. Thanks for being with us tonight. Thanks for that report. Superintendent Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Board President Fong, members of the board, our staff and community. Today marks day sixty-four of school. We are doing some great things here in Santa Rosa City Schools, and we're showing that in part by participating in our hashtag SRCS Gratitude Attitude Initiative. Some of our schools have even gone back and tagged formal social, former, excuse me, social media posts to include in the hashtag. So looking forward to seeing more of that going on. I had the pleasure of attending with some of my colleagues and our family and community Special Olympics events last Friday hosted at Montgomery High School. I just have to say, we have some amazing students. I was so proud to be out there seeing our students and those from other districts. I am encouraged every day by our students who are giving their all. And I want to thank and also commend our staff and community who are doing all that they can to, number one, believe in our students, and then, two, to continue to go above and beyond to be available for our students. As a reminder, schools are closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day. Tomorrow, we honor all those who are military veterans. Schools are open on Friday, and we expect school attendance on Friday. With that, I'm brief tonight for President Fong, and I'll hand it back to you.
All right. I'm going to give a very short report. I just want to say proudly and gratefully that I was able to visit every single one of our schools. One, I need to reschedule. And the work going on in the schools just makes your heart brim, your emotions run, the great, amazing work done in the classroom at the granular level where the teacher and the student are together, teacher and the students are together. It's a beautiful thing. They've got their masks on. They're happy. Teaching and learning is going on robustly and with care and excellence, and we should be very, very proud of what's going on, you know, and we're getting mired in things like vaccine and masking and all kinds of things. But where it really counts, whoever meets the road, is where our kids are engaged in school, happy in school. The teachers are there giving their all, loving their children, loving their students, and it's a beautiful. loving their students, and it's a beautiful thing. So, so many good things happening, just like our superintendent was saying. Thank you, so gratitude. And then, I just wanted to let our board know, and our superintendent know, that I was recently elected to the Asian Pacific Islander California School Board Members Association. So it's an offshoot of the California School Board in the state, and it's a board that is about 10 people, and we uplift, how do we uplift our API students throughout the state? How do we support school board members to recognize that model minority myth is harmful to, to API kids? And we stood up for ethnic studies, we stood up for, to combat anti-Asian hate, and we continue to work toward representation and support. So it's going to be a two-year term, and I'm in it for two years, at least. It's a privilege to do that work. So, thank you. Board members, you are going to show me by your hands who's got a report, and I see Director De La Cruz is handed up.
Thank you, thank you. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Coach Carrie Joseph, who was named the North Coast Section Cross Country Coach of the Year for 2021. Super rad. Coach Joseph is just a beautiful human being who has so much love in her heart and so much drive in her, like, spirit that just really moves kids to be, to be their best selves and to have so much fun doing it. So I'm just really, really grateful for, for coaches like Coach Carrie, who make my kiddo's life and so many other kiddos that she coaches and touches every day. Just feel that love and feel that support and feel that drive underneath them. So woo-hoo, Coach Carrie. And then, I just wanted to raise my voice with President Fong and talk about, you know, what has been in the papers. But I think it's really, really critical for us to recognize that we are also an institution that is struggling and striving to eradicate institutional racism, that we are a part of the structural racism that exists in this county that results in those front page, those front page headlines for, for people who I love and I care about. And so I just, you know, there's a really important moment that we have as a community to stop the harm, to stop the combination of hyper visibility for, for Black folks, for Indigenous folks, for people who really come from small, smaller portions of our population and who experience increased institutional marginalization and invisibility as a result of those small numbers, as, at the same time that there's like this hyper visibility, because you're usually the only one in the room. And that, that's a really hard responsibility, and I just want to say thank you. Dr. Armstrong, thank you for carrying so much of the weight of these, of this responsibility through this world right now. And I want to make sure that Black and Indigenous folks and other people of color in our institutions know that we're here to support your work and that we see you and we love you and we respect you, and we're, we're going to be here to make sure that you feel that every day, because we also validate and recognize that many times during the day, you do not feel that in this community, and that is not acceptable. And at some point, our work together to make sure that we do more, to ensure that you feel humanized and loved and seen in a way that is respectful of your humanity is, is the goal of, you know, of, I'm glad to say, you know, this, this team of leaders in this institution. So it is not acceptable. It is not okay, and it is not individual. It is not an interpersonal moment. It is the reality of our institutions. And so, Ed, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't say, and share my love for all of your work of, you know, being a Black leader in this community and what that feels like every day. So I just want to say that I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve with you and serve, you know, for this community and serve, you know, in particular for those, for those kids and those teachers and those staff people who make this place run with that love and with that cultural responsiveness and with that deep pride in who it is that we are. Adelante.
Thank you, Director. Director McCormick.
Um, just two quick things. First of all, I believe during a public comment, we heard from Kelly Clark, and I just want to say that your mother was my second-grade teacher. And at Brook Hill, Mrs. Clark, and she definitely planted the seeds of many things in my life, and one was to be an educator and to teach our diverse community and to love everybody in it. So Kelly, if you're still listening, I'm thrilled that you are involved in our MLK celebrations at the district, and please email me, because I'd really like to connect with you and chat more about that. And then, the other thing that I wanted to say is that I just, I just want to say that I strongly support, I know we're going to do a deep dive into our educator effectiveness block grant funds allocation coming up in the agenda, but I really am in support of what President Howell talked about in her report with mentorship for our educators and what it means, the amount of time and energy that is required for teachers to teach teachers and teachers to serve as mentors, to upcoming teachers, young teachers, people interested in becoming educators, is significant if it is to be done properly. And when it is done properly, it is the most powerful thing ever. I've been fortunate enough to have some incredible mentors during my career, and so I'm just in huge support of that, and I just wanted to say that out loud. That's it.
All right. I see no other board member hands up. Am I missing anyone? Speak up. All right. We do not have a CSBA report tonight. California School Board Association report. We're moving right on to the E Discussion and Action items. We're starting with one is an action. It's a public board meeting via teleconference per AB 361, which we need to do periodically.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, our community and staff. Per AB 361, every 30 days, the board is asked to consider whether there is an interest to continue board meetings virtually. If so, if so, the board would take positive action tonight in order to extend those board meetings virtually pursuant to this Assembly Bill. And I hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
Okay, so board, again, do you have any questions? You're going to raise your virtual hand, because I'm keeping track on this iPad that way. Superintendent Trinell, has anything changed with the city of Santa Rosa and using their council chambers?
And I think you might have
Director Flores has his hand up.
Yes.
Okay, Director Flores, you need to, you need to do
That was my question. Go ahead, go ahead, answer that.
You got to put your, your virtual hand up.
He did, he did. It's okay. So at this time in the last conversation I had with the city, they are maintaining their social distancing protocols. That means that there would only be an allowance of 17 audience members and some additional adjustments to how we would typically do an in-person meeting. So they have not changed their protocols the last time I had a discussion with them.
Okay. Sorry, Director Flores. I see no other hands up. We are going to take this to public comment.
Are there any student members of the public who'd like to comment on item E1? And now, we will open it to any member of the public. If there is anyone who would like to comment on E1, please raise your hand at this time. And Deanna Oliveras would like to comment.
Hi. I know that it's been probably, I guess, about 30 days since the last time this was brought up, and I was under the impression stakeholders, as in parents and teachers and community members, would be asked about it and kind of polled to see what they wanted to do, and that hasn't happened. So I really hope tonight that if you vote for anything, it's only maybe one more 30 days, and I really hope that you stick to your word and make an attempt to ask parents and stakeholders what they want, because many of the other school districts are doing it in person. And so it just kind of, it's very weird that we aren't at all even thinking about it. And, you know, maybe most people might disagree with me, but I think the right thing to do is to ask, at least, because you seem to ask about other things like money and that other meeting, you ask for stakeholders' input because you have to, because you have to do that to get the money. But when it comes to something like this, it's kind of disheartening that your word wasn't kept, and you didn't ask stakeholders what they feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment on E1 is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, good evening, again. I actually am of the group that would not be able to continue to participate by the fact that you guys have created these mandates that don't allow me to participate. So I'm leaning on the side of, I think we should stay virtual so people aren't taken out of their positions of activism and the things that they're doing, and limiting yet another minority group from being able to participate in these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there are no other hands raised.
All right. Any other discussion on this board? Omar, Director Medina.
I'd like to move that we continue conducting public meetings virtually specified in Assembly Bill 361.
Second. All right. So that was moved by Director Medina, seconded by Vice President McCormick. Any other discussion, board? We can take the vote. Adina?
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Flores.
No.
President Fong.
Hi. All right, thank you. That passes six to one. We're moving on to E2, Actions, Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding, Reach of the Santa Rosa City Schools and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 75, Regarding COVID-19 Leave.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I invite Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Shepherd, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell, President Fong, members of the board. The MOU before you tonight for consideration is an extension of the COVID leave that was authorized last year but expired at the end of September 30th. So because of ongoing need for members that may be required to quarantine, we've agreed to, in this MOU, to extend up to 10 total days for this year. And I'll point out that the fiscal impact is relatively hard to pin down, because it will depend on how many days are utilized, and obviously, the substitute rate for each person is going to be based on the, the position that they hold in the range for that position. So although we don't have a direct fiscal impact to report, that will be obviously something we would determine at the end of the year, and I believe we are using SRR funds to cover the increased cost as we incur it. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
I see no board hands. Someone like to make a motion on this?
Over the comment.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, it goes
Oh, yes.
Comment.
True that.
No.
It's time for public comment.
If there If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E2, we prefer our students go first, but I would say, anyone at this time, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on E2. And Deanna Oliveras would like to comment.
Hi. I am totally aware that teachers need and deserve COVID-paid days off, but I think sometimes because, parents, we don't have a way to talk to you guys, because you don't, this is the only outlet we have, that when I read that MOU, it's disheartening to me for a few reasons. One, teachers are adults and vaccinated and master not, they are the ones giving, and they're the ones transmitting COVID on campuses, not children. Dr. May said that a few months ago herself. So it, it's kind of frustrating that a teacher could possibly go on a vacation or go somewhere and be not very responsible, catch COVID, come back, have 10 days off, and then our children are then stuck with substitute teachers. And with the learning loss that our children have had, inconsistency in their classroom hurts their social, emotional, and even could possibly physically well-being, because many kids are bullied at school, and some campuses are unsafe. I've heard multiple parents the last few months say that campuses are unsafe, and when you have teachers, substitute teachers, that aren't familiar with people and classes and kids, and they're not used to class sizes and such, and there's not a lot, enough people on campus, that's extra-bodied teachers that are not on campus, and there's much more that go into it. It's not, it's not like I'm being so negative, like, oh, teachers don't deserve it. Teachers do deserve it. But if my child comes home with the stuff he knows, I have to take 10 days off of work and I don't get paid. And so it's just frustrating that you meet with the teachers' union to discuss what they need, but nobody will host a town hall, nobody will meet me in person or talk to me in person with, in person with other parents. And so it is, it's really, we're on two different playing fields, and I feel like you respect teachers a lot less, you respect parents a lot less than teachers, because of the union, because they have so much money. And it actually really makes me sad, and I wish that somebody would do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. President Fong, there are no other hands raised.
Director Medina.
I would like to move that we approve the MOU that was reached with Central City Schools and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 75, Regarding COVID-19 Leave.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Director Medina and seconded by, I think it was, Director Flores.
Director Medina.
But did you want to call for a discussion first, or are we going straight to the vote?
I didn't see anybody's hands, so go ahead. So
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. That passes. We're moving on to item three. It's an action. It's a Resolution Number 2021/22-18 to Recognize Peace Polls for Schools.
I'm really excited to bring this item forward to you tonight, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. And I also want to recognize that we have with us tonight three members who we've been meeting with on this effort, Mr. Fred Petucha, Renee Marie, and Terry McNeil. We have been working with them, and they've been working in multiple places to provide peace polls at all schools, so that it is a representation of how our students can feel safe, represented, and appreciated in this world and on their campuses. You have the Resolution Number 2021/22-18 to consider tonight. Many of our schools are in, have an interest to have a peace poll on their campus, and quite a few of our schools already have one in existence on their campus. At this time, there is no cost directly from, for the district for this effort, with the exception that schools consider, along with district support, how to maintain the peace polls that are on their campus. And with that, I hand it back to you, Board President Fong.
All right. Do we have any questions, board? I see one from Clerk All right. Do we have any questions, board? I see one from Clerk Ever Flores.
Thank you, President Fong. Is there an expected upkeep price tag on this? Let's say a yearly upkeep that we need to keep will be mindful of.
Not necessarily. The upkeep would be dependent on where the location of the peace poll is. Is to make sure that it's free of debris, for example, and that there's, you know, appropriate landscaping around it to make sure it stays visible. If the site would like to continue, some schools, I understand, have more than one on their campuses around the world. And so if there was additional interest, I imagine the cost for having additional peace polls would be on the school site to cover.
Thank you.
And Director De La Cruz.
I was just wondering if there's any curricular accompaniment with this action. So is there any kind of connectivity to what students are learning or any opportunity to have kind of guest speakers around? Around peace and and justice and how we work together as a community to ensure that.
There certainly is. There is actually a ceremony to kick off the representation of the peace poll. And that in itself can begin an implementation of continued conversation in classrooms or in school assemblies, for example.
And is there like a kind of a an educator who's sponsoring the peace bowl and who's? Who's kind of championing the the curricular development of this or beyond the ceremony? So how how are we? Kind of connecting the dots all the way through the project?
I think that's a great question. I don't think that we have a formal process established, but it is something we absolutely are open to.
Do we have, I'm I'm just wondering, like, do we have Model UN clubs or folks who are looking at? Kind of international relations or debate or like, I just feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of richness here to connect back to to learning and teaching.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to have Dr. Armstrong and her team look into that. We can provide some additional information.
Great. Thank you. I love this project. I'm happy to to move forward unless there are any any other comments or questions.
We're gonna take public comment now.
There are any student members of the public who'd like to comment on E three? Please raise your hands. And now just any member of the public who'd like to comment on E three. Raise your hand at this time, please. There are no hands raised.
Any discussion, board members? Is that, I see no hands up. I will say that we I'd like to really appreciate the Santa Rosa East West Rotary Club and Veterans for Peace, Chapter seventy one, for bringing that to us. And I think to your comment, Director De La Cruz, it's it's like if you have something on campus that is this. Pretty amazing in seven languages chosen by the school, that it can be a catalyst for student learning and student interest and. All kinds of good things can happen with this. Director Sheffield.
I just wanted to say that, you know, um. If there's a a ceremony that goes along with this, I'd love to see a presentation for us. To to either be a part of or to to bring up at a school board meeting as well, so the public can really enjoy it as well.
Like that. All right. I think there's no more discussion. Our hands up. We can call for a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty one twenty two dash eighteen to recognize peace polls for schools.
Second.
All right. That was Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Sheffield.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina. Director Medina, I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, sorry, I froze. Um, yes.
Thank you. President Fong.
Yes, thank you. We are on item B four. This is the discussions educator effectiveness block grant funds allocation for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six. Superintendent Chanel.
Thank you, Board President Fong. Tonight, we bring you an initial draft of a one. Of the first meeting of a two meeting process for the requirement and considering a plan for educator effectiveness funds. Under Assembly Bill A B one thirty, Chapter forty four, Section twenty two. And Assembly Bill one sixty seven, Chapter two fifty two, Section nine. Educator Effectiveness Funds have been allocated by the California Department of Education. To support professional learning for certificated teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals. And other certificated staff. I want to emphasize here that there are ten areas that the funds are allowed to be used. And tonight, what we provide to you in the overall perspective. Is an initial thinking around the areas where we may concentrate these funds. The amounts that you see are placeholders and are not the indicators of the official amounts that we will bring forward in a subsequent meeting. The feedback that we used initially to at least populate any of the ten areas. Is based on professional learning feedback that we received from our staff in August and October. As well as feedback that we already received from the S R funds, which we brought forward to you already. So given all of that input, we establish an initial draft. What is happening now? Is that we are continuing to take input from the meeting tonight and moving forward from our staff groups. And our charter schools, who are also represented and have their own allocation. Are working with their councils and leadership teams and staff to consider how their funding will be allocated in the final plan. I want to remind everyone that the the utilization of these funds is over five years. And can be utilized at any time in any given moment, any given amount, excuse me. Over the course of those five years. The funding cannot be utilized to hire more people. That is one of the requirements in the law that it not be used for that. And it is purely focused on professional development, professional growth, professional learning for staff. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Board President Fong, if you're ready.
Okay, we're looking for questions and I see one from Clerk Flores.
Quickly, could you define uh who our professional staff will be included in in this professional development? Who do we who do we mean by staff?
Yes, so all of our certificated staff, so that means our teachers, our school psychologists, our counselors. For example, paraprofessionals in our in our on our staff. Include our instructional assistants, which are classified employees. As well as all administrators on our on our staffs from program managers. Assistant principals, vice principals, principals, district level administrators as examples. Those are all certificated and then our one classified group is our instructional assistants or paraprofessionals.
Is it also kosher to, let's say, we've, if we had already approved certain professional development for staff? The affirmation staff list that you just said, to use this sort of funding instead of general funding?
Yes, absolutely.
So there's no timeline, right? So so we can use that funding instead of general funding. Got it?
Five years timeline, five years.
Right, but something that we have already approved that.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Can redirect.
Great. Thank you. That's it.
We are gonna go to public comment.
I saw Director Medina's hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Director Medina.
Yeah, um, just a question. I think item number two lists programs that lead to effective standards line instruction. And um, the question is, do we do a lot of non-standard line instruction and if so? Well, on the standard aligned instruction, like what in terms of the development that we provide? Do we need to focus on in terms of teachers or staff?
I think it's going to be dependent on groups typically when we start to focus on standards based instruction. Or effective instructional practice, we're going to break that down into variety of focus areas. So that our our teachers and our our staff in general will have the ability to access that training. We will be looking to offer a variety of training, so part of it will be interest based and also need based. For so for those who would like refreshers in the common core standards, for example. We would be offering those at our last board meeting. We focused a lot on English learner support. So we could certainly look at the ELD standards. The integrated and designated ELD instructional models, for example. Including, we know that mathematics is a is a constant emphasis for us as we continue to support our students who are struggling. So those are just some examples of how we potentially would utilize the funds in that category.
And and the second part is in terms of um the standards aligned instruction, is there any sort of like? Assessment that's done to see kind of how what we're doing or how our staff has developed to that will kind of maybe. Better help us in determining which development we focus on or what area we focus on. Or or to know kind of where we need to provide more assistance in.
I think there are a variety of ways that we can look at this. We certainly want to be partners with the. People amongst our staff and what they believe is something that they need. There is no proficiency exam, if you will, right now, and I I don't know if that's a direction we would go per se. But more it would be looking at how our sites in particular. Seeing their particular needs in teams, for example, how can departments get together and do some collaborative work and learning? So in that in that we have a variety of ways to reach people so that we're feeling filling and meeting a greater need.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other hands now. Let's open this up to public comment.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E four. The educator effectiveness block grant funds allocation, please raise your hand at this time. And Sheila Walker would like to comment.
Hi, good evening, Board members and Superintendent Trinell. I just wanted to mention that um I think. A lot of these things are obviously great ideas and it's great that we have this money. But I hope that if we're redirected, if we do choose to redirect as a district. Changing the budget that that will be brought forth so that it's very transparent. What money is being shifted and what money is is from the block grants is going to be used now. Instead for this current fiscal year. And of course, we'll see the projections as you plan, but um. You know, there's there's also what you just approved recently with the S R funding. There was a lot of discussion about how that's a living document and how things are going to be moved around. So I think as a stakeholder that I would be wanting to see where we are when we move these monies around. And how that's impacting our current budget and as we move forward to the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other hands raised.
Board members, any comments on this discussion? Yes, Omar.
I think um, I know that the the figures that are in place now are placeholders. I'm curious as to if, when it comes back for action, if there'll be a further breakdown. But also I just kind of wanted a more comment on um the fact that I feel that. We we have struggled as a district with math and I would really like to see a lot of focus put in on math. Just, you know, STEM in general, but but to me, math is at the core of STEM as a whole. And it's a place that I really feel that we've been struggling. And and if we could definitely put a lot of investment in development into that development, I think would be a good idea.
And I see Director De La Cruz's hand is up.
I just want to raise raise my voice in support of Director Medina and that suggestion to really focus on math. I think especially when we think about the ways in which, you know, our education can be exclusive and and leave folks out. I think math education for girls. Math education for kids who are not being challenged and held to high standards like this, these are equity issues. And so I I'd love for us to find, you know, those amazing teachers like Mr. G. Mr. G, we still just have mad love for you. At Santa Rosa Middle School, seventh grade, woo hoo. How do we elevate those those wonderful teachers who are really killing it? How do we shine light on that and kind of share that across our institution and to change that culture? You know, I'm reminded, like, I I went to law school at a time when we didn't have grades and we used to laugh about. You know, the kind of really antiquated way of saying like, look to your left, look to your right. You know, at the end of your first year, fifty percent of you will not be in this room, like. That is not a culture that incentivizes people to learn well. And if anything, when fifty percent of kids are not doing well in a class, that says something about the needs that a teacher has to really look deeply and to get that kind of support from our district. To change those practices. So this just feels like such an amazing opportunity to to shine good light and to do that gratitude attitude for those folks who are. You know, who are really who are really bringing that that skill set and that love to the way that they're teaching math. So um. Thanks and yay, go.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna pin in my three cents. Now, I've been in education my entire adult career and I've seen a lot of professional development come and go. Come and go. And what moves the needle in terms of what the board can weigh in on? I mean, many of these decisions are not the boards. But we certainly have input on policy. And the policy is of course, and I know Superintendent Chanel that you and your team are thinking this way. Now, if we're looking backwards, what where are we gonna put? The most bucks for the bank? And what will what do teachers believe that they need? And I have to side with President Howell, who talked about. Experts in the room, our own homegrown experts, very effective when we do that. Kinder Academy is coming down upon us. I hope it comes with a budget from the state and it's not out of this budget. It's coming, but I'm gonna echo the math. I just spent four days at a continuation high school in another town doing accreditation for them. And every single one of the kids we talked to in terms of what was hard for them, they said it was math. And when the kids are labeling themselves as math failures at grade five. It affects their entire rest of their teenage years and their adult life and their economic well being after that. So. Policy wise, if the board can laser focus on math success and what that takes. And how we do it differently. You know? Big, big topics that I know, Doc, yeah, Superintendent Chanel, that you are deeply rooted in math. That you've handled some multimillion dollar grants for professional development and math math development. So we're gonna count on your expertise in this too. And I know that this much this money sounds like a lot, but over five years for as many people as we have, it's really not that much money, but we're very grateful for it. So. This is a discussion unless there's anybody else who'd like to weigh in, we're gonna move on. Director Medina.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing. I um, you know, I I don't know too much about professional development and what could be added, but. But I know that over the past few years, we dealt with a lot of students, parents, teachers, staff. And I think the importance of being motivated is something that's really needed. And if there's any professional development, really focus on motivating and just showing students that you really believe in them. I know as a student of color, when I was young, there was a lot of like mixed messages where people just seem to not believe in me. And and I know how hard that could be. So I think just really also adding more of that skill set to our staff. To really help believe and motivate our students to something that that's critical and if if professional development could be a part of that, I think it would be really great as well. Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Chanel, anything else you wanted to say about this?
So we look forward to bringing back further information and sort of the final. Well, we look forward to bringing back further information and sort of the final draft plan to the board at, at the December eighth meeting. The board will be asked to take action on the plan. Please know that the plan is flexible so that it can always be adjusted as necessary. But by the, by law, the board must take action on the plan prior to or by December 30th, 2021.
This is challenging, many, many needs. Not a lot of time, substitute issues. So thank you in advance. Moving on to item five, this is also a discussion. It's the status and review of the information on the naming of Lawrence Cook Middle School, Caesar Chavez Language Academy campus. And I think all of us have been really holding our breath and waiting for this. And I know a lot of people have too. So let's get going on this tonight. All of you out there waiting for this, thank you for waiting. So it's not too late. It's only, it's only 7:15.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, our staff and community. Tonight I bring forward to you a synopsis of information that I poured through from former work that occurred or from a merger committee that was formed when the Cook Campus and Cesar Chavez Language Academy were being brought together onto the Lawrence Cook Campus. The discussion tonight is just to give you information through the history of artifacts and discussions that happened prior. And the, the question tonight for the board to consider, this is not an action item, but this is a discussion item for the board to consider is what are the next steps? Is there enough information here for the board to consider giving direction to bring forward a public hearing and a naming of the school that currently is termed and named our Cesar Chavez Language Academy. And, and that name is being utilized right now and is recognized by the state of California in record. Or, or whether there is a desire to begin a formal facility naming committee, a, a community committee that would work over several months to follow processes per our board policy to identify a name and bring that forward to the board for consideration. I know that there's great passion from members of the former Cook Middle School who went through this process and there's great passion from our Cesar Chavez Language Academy educators and families as well around this matter. And I give it back to you, Board President Fong, for the board to consider in discussion tonight and to give staff direction on next steps.
I'm looking forward to hearing what people have to say. And so let's ask some questions. I see Director Medina, then I see Director Flores.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I feel like I'm an alumnus of, of Cook, you know, I, but, but I supported closing Cook and embracing Cesar Chavez Language Academy. The meeting I attended there a while ago where Cesar Chavez Language Academy was put up as a name and it received a lot of support. To me, told me, you know, that this community has developed and is very passionate and strong with that identity. I support keeping Cesar Chavez Language Academy as a name. That's the school that, that's there now and to maintain that, but, but also respect honoring the, the legacy of Cook. And I do support the idea of maybe renaming the library after Lawrence Cook. And, and maybe starting a committee to follow that process to rename that facility. But I believe that the school should maintain its, its current name, Cesar Chavez Language Academy. So I just wanted to throw out kind of where I'm at.
And I guess you didn't have a question. We'll go on to Clerk Flores.
Right, I do have a question and I do have a comment, but I'll wait for my comment. So, um, thank you. This is very thorough. There, there is a, an item in here that says that the Wright District opposed closing of a public middle school and was concerned of the enrollment at SCL and High School and will not approve the CCLA K A charter in 2023. So I like to know, you know, our options, right? Obviously, if the Wright School District says yay, you know, no problem, right? But what happens if they say no? What do we do as a school district? Because I know that's associated with location and relocating that school again, it would be an ordeal to deal with. So, um, that's why I'd like to hear what the district has planned, if that were the case in 2023.
I have two comments that I'd like to make and I did advise with, uh, get legal to assist me in thinking about the, the legal parameters around this. One, I was reminded that charter schools, due to a law that came into effect this year, it actually gave an extension of two years on the charters. So originally CCLA's charter would be up in 2023. That's been extended to 2025. The second thing is a district like the Wright District, W R I G H T. The Wright District holds a lot of cards in terms of the potential movement forward or continuation of the charter. I think that there are many things to consider though, as we approach that timeline in the future, including the interest of those who would want to attend CCLA in the future and how, and what enrollment looks like within the Wright District that would affect and be affected by the CCLA charter. So the Wright District would have leverage in consideration of whether we would be able to continue to move forward. But we would certainly work with the Wright District staff and administration around the effort going forward.
So I like to say, in the worst case scenario, they say, you know, it's I, I, as a school board member, I like to hear what options we have or what's our plan of action? If the worst case scenario were to happen, right? So if the Wright District says, no, this is not happening in, in our, you know, boundaries. So I would love to hear from legal about that, you know, in, in the future board meeting. And, and, and that's just one option, but maybe several options from our legal department as to what we can do. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Director Medina, your hand is up still or again different?
Yeah, again, I think just to follow up on, uh, Director Flores' question. I think the, the other thing that we're also kind of looking into and focused on as a district is district consolidation. And that might be something that might happen between now and 2025. You know, depends on what arises out of that. And that would rearrange that whole situation, but I add that like what happens there, I think is also not necessarily associated with what the naming or the name of the school is.
Okay. All right. See no other hands? We
I have one question. I think something, something that I'd like to understand is if we closed Cook as a school and we reopened Cesar Chavez in its location, like what, what is the legal impact of having closed a school when it comes to renaming that same location? I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to figure out chicken and egg. And so are we renaming? Were we, we're naming a new school, right?
Yeah.
So I said, okay.
Okay, see Mr. Edson, are you raising your hand? Okay.
Yeah. If, if I could Superintendent Trinell and members of the board, good evening. It's not necessarily the renaming of the school, Director De La Cruz. There was discussion when this took place several years ago now. And CCLA has simply extended its charter into full eighth grade, right? So when they moved to the Cook Campus, they were a K six that first year, I believe, if I put it in my mind correctly. Last year they expanded to K seven. And this year they extended to a full K eight. So they included, and we gave priority to neighborhood students to attend in seventh and eighth grade under the charter that was originally as a K eight over the eight-year build out. And then there was discussions during the committee work about what the name would be, thus the meeting that Director Medina referenced. And the information that's in the board cover regarding the community input on that. So it's simply continuing that discussion. Even though there's a full school there with the K eight now, including neighborhood students that would have traditionally gone to Cook and just formalizing that if necessary.
Yeah. So I thank you so much for that Deputy Superintendent, because I do think that it's like, I'd like to just be really clear on what it is that's in front of us. And it's that we closed Cook Middle School and we approved the extension of the charter and the relocation of Cesar Chavez Language Academy in that location. So you know, it, it feels like the name of the school is Cesar Chavez Language Academy. And I know we've had a couple of conversations about that and took a lot of community input, but I, I think it would be really important for the district to be very clear on kind of the steps that it took to get to this place and why in many ways, kind of like a renaming isn't necessarily even the right frame for us to consider. It's just approval of the extension of a charter and relocation into a new campus. And, and that school was Cesar Chavez Language Academy. It continues to be Cesar Chavez Language Academy. So I'm just, you know, and I, and I, so I feel like the question before this board is really about how are we going to honor Mr. Lawrence Cook and his family? You know, on the campus. And I feel like that's, you know, that's a great question for us to get creative with, with our community. And whether it's a gym or a park or a structure or some way of honoring that history. But I feel like in many ways, we've already taken the steps necessary to be relatively clear on the name of the school that now exists on the former Cook Campus, right? So I'm, I just, I, I just want us to be really clear together.
Director De La Cruz, um, as I poured through years of board meeting and minutes and, and notes from the committee, I don't think it was that clear previously. In fact, I believe there was direction that through the merger committee that the naming would also be a part of that potential process, which is why there were multiple community forums and input taken from students and staff from both schools and communities to consider with a vote around the names that were brought forward.
I think we have members of the public who are really waiting to speak to us and unless you have any more clarifying questions, board members, we're going to save our comments for discussion.
I see Director Medina's hand.
Director Medina.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, and Superintendent Trinell, if you could clarify this. So currently as it stands, this name of the school is Cesar Chavez Language Academy. And if I understand correctly, staff has delayed, you know, a new sign and things like that. Pending clarification from us as a board, um, what direction we're going to take, is that correct? That have been ordered or anything, because you don't know what we are going to correct.
That is correct.
All right, let's take public comments on this.
So if there are students in the public who'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And I see a couple of hands. I don't believe they are students. Let's just open this to any member of the public, please, who'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And our first comment is Xavier Nazario.
Good evening, Superintendent and Santa Rosa City School Board members. My name is Xavier Nazario and I'm a parent leader at Cesar Chavez Language Academy. And I've been intimately involved in the merger and transition process with CCLA and the former Cook Middle School. I want to commend our new superintendent, Anna Trinell. She has done her due diligence to understand the intricacies and the importance of the name issue, specifically from an equity and cultural perspective. She collaborated with me and other parent leaders, and I believe her brief naming summary is accurate. However, I also want to express gratitude to my fellow members that were on the board. It was a group of representatives from parents, staff, administrators from both schools. And I'm proud to say that we created a framework to help our school become one community. But our work to become one community is far from over. A name is often considered the most important part of someone's identity, yet the name is not settled. This name conversation is well overdue and quite frankly, it is a distraction that we need to move past because we have so many other issues to tackle in front of us. A person's name is one of the most important gifts that parents give to their children. Thought, intention, culture, history and love are all invested into that decision. Yet imagine a two-year-old child that remains nameless, or better yet, a business that has no name. How would that impact the child's growth and development? Further, how would that impact the business? On paper, we remain name, nameless, but in our collective souls, we are Cesar Chavez Language Academy. I do believe in paying homage to our elders and the leaders of the past. So let's commemorate the legacy of Mr. Cook by naming a small portion of the school and also not forgetting the commitment that the Cook teachers and staff have made through this difficult transition. But let's look towards the future. In partnership with the district, our founding parents selected the name Cesar Chavez Language Academy. That is our name. That is our identity. And however, the district and the board has to get to that conclusion, let's do it with an extreme sense of urgency and with intention. Let's move from discussion to action so that we can close one chapter and open a new one, a unified TK to eight dual immersion charter school with open enrollment for seventh and eighth grades. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next comment is Alicia Ford.
Yes, I'm mute. Um, hello, I'm actually Alicia Ford's daughter and hi, man. Why, why did I say daughter? Sorry. Okay. Sorry for the tiny, a little mishap. Now I'm in fourth grade. And now on to the order of business. So, um, I feel like the idea of branding Caesar Chavez Language Academy, the school is a great idea. I'm all for that. But I want to make sure that Lawrence Cook is remembered in our school. So I've maybe in a, as many already have said in the gym or maybe the library would be a good place to put him, his name to have him recognized. Now, I want, um, so branding us, I believe by branding us, since CCOA I do believe is understaffed, I would say that branding us will help get the attention of, of job seekers. And then we, that might help and might help the school. Cause I do know that there have been many incidents of, um, let's just say, uh, kind of people getting hurt and people feeling unsafe on, at the school. So, um, the more people that are volunteering are great. So just to wrap it all up, I'd like to say as long as, as long as Lawrence Cook is remembered, then I'd say I'm all for it.
Thank you so much for your comment. Would you please tell us your name?
My name is Joaquin Ford.
Thank you so much, Joaquin.
Thank you, Joaquin. That was very welcome. Appreciate you.
Our next comment is Catherine Howell.
Hi again. I specifically state that these comments for now, I'm not speaking as the SRTA president at the moment. I'm speaking as a Cook teacher of 11 years and a member of the mentor, of the merger committee. Honestly, I think this conversation is about two years too late. And I really don't see the point in renaming the school. It was presented to our committee as a merger, that it was two schools creating a new school. And from that perspective, the merger committee was trying to create a new identity. It is absolutely clear now that that's not true. It is absolutely clear now that that's not true, this was not a merger. This was, as Director De La Cruz described. The closure of Cook Middle School. And Cesar Chavez Language Academy occupying the space that Cook used to occupy. For that reason, I don't see any reason to call it anything other than CCLA. There is no reason to form a naming committee, there's no neat reason to rehash this conversation. But I will absolutely echo what Mr. Nazario said. This process isn't over, it was stopped abruptly two years ago. And it's not a smooth transition in any way, shape, or form. The middle school teachers who used to be Cook teachers that are now CCLA teachers are feeling. Anger, aggression, attacked by parents pretty much daily. Not agreeing with the middle school process. Not understanding middle school students and that they are different than elementary school students. These are the problems that need to be addressed. What is called is CCLA, I, I don't think there's going back from that. What I would appreciate is some appreciation for the teachers and the students of the former Cook Campus. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for staying in that two-minute time limit, our next comment is Nick, Nick, could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, thank you, Nick Caston. I am a parent at CCLA, was also a member of the merger committee and. Up until last year was CCLA's representative on the district advisory committee. I want to acknowledge the, the Cook teachers and especially the folks who participated in the merger committee. It was a process I agree was cut off. What felt like literally in the middle of our work in large part because of COVID. But certainly we were not completed with what needed to be done. And I feel like ending that merger committee process abruptly created this unfortunate situation. With that, we need our name to be finalized. When my son was enrolled in CCLA and TK at Comstock. And then was in his beginning of elementary school in CCLA. At the Cook Campus. We now finally are at the point where we need to have solid footing and ground under our feet as a school. And be the Caesar Chavez Language Academy, period, on Sebastopol Road in Roseland, California. Where, where we belong and where our home is, and it's also where we live. So I would appreciate it if you would move as quickly as possible to end this conversation. And move on to the important ones, we have staffing issues, serious staffing issues. If you think we're going to get enough campus supervisors and instructional aides at $16 an hour, you're wrong. We need to be talking about how we're going to staff this campus. We need more administrators, we have gone from being a boutique, small charter school. To now having a very large student body with not enough administrators to help support that. We need to be talking about our curriculum, we don't need to be talking about this, this isn't a debate. As you can see from the results, unsolicited, without even being an option on the wall. CCLA is what our school is called, it's what our community thinks of it being called, thank you.
Thank you, next comment on E5 is Natalie Hoyt.
Good evening, I already emailed you earlier this week, so I will keep it short, but I would just like to say that I am in favor of. Continuing on with the name, Cesar Chavez Language Academy. But most importantly, I would say is just that there's a decision made as soon as possible and that we do have one name and we. Can start to move forward as one school, this year has definitely been difficult and had, has had a rocky start and I would just like. To see it come together as one community. Right now, it definitely feels like two schools that share a campus, there's two different names, there's two different mascots. It's very confusing, there's different dress codes, all sorts of issues, whereas just definitely feels like two schools sharing one campus. And I would like to see it. Move forward as one TK to eight school, that's how it was. Sold to me as a charter school that went through eighth grade, and that's not what it feels like right now, thank you.
Thank you, next comment is Anastasio, and could you please state your full name just for the record?
Hello, my name is Anastasio Tovada Rose, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to thank Ms. Anna Trunell, our superintendent, to acknowledge that Cesar Chavez. Language Academy is acknowledged as a state school in the state of California. Talk about hashtag gratitude attitude. I just used that hashtag the other day and I'm extremely proud to use that at our school. And I want to continue using that at our school, it's been overpassed to. Of our school to be, to have a home, it's so sad that it's taken eight years. For us to have the discussion and we're still discussing it, we've had two superintendents. We've had three board member presidents still discussing this school and we're still at ground zero. Ed Sheffield came, came to my son's eighth grade graduation. And he spoke, he's a fifth grader now. We have eighth graders that started this program in the TK and Kinder Program, they're going to be graduating this year, they're so proud. Yet they, they don't have a name for their school. President, SRTA President Hell spoke earlier about, you know, we need bilingual students in our community, that's our school. I mean, you can't hashtag more than that, gratitude attitude. I'm proud to be a CCLA parent and I want this name to continue and I want our kids to continue to. Thank you for your time and hopefully we get it on the agenda to make this an action item and we can vote on this and forward.
Thank you, next is Lily Rollin.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the board and Superintendent Trunell. Thank you Superintendent Trunell for the lengthy synopsis and. You know, going back through all our years. I always like to remind everyone that. You know, our school was formed in, as a response of a lawsuit. It wasn't something that was envisioned, but it was more of a response of a lawsuit. And the parents that have been advocates throughout this whole journey and the very first. Parents of this school, you know, all the things that we've been through, that are all our journey. The chain link fences that we had at Comstock, up, leading up until now. There's a big, great pride in, in who we are because we have a really strong community there. Which is of parents and teachers and, and, and everyone that has this greater vision and. It, it's part of our, our journey, but it's also part of our name, Cesar Chavez Language Academy. So when we talk about great passion, it's because of all of the struggles that the school has been through. To really get up and going and we're not finished yet. For me, as a parent representative and also part of the merger committee, I have greater visions for not just. You know, we talk about our school and our school, our school, but. I also want to see what can this school do on this side of town, how can we rebrand? And really be inclusive for all of the neighborhood children, so really thinking bigger. With equity vision, equity lens. So really, you know, requesting that we, we move on with the naming and, and continue to, to push forward our efforts, thank you.
Thank you, there are no other hands raised.
Really appreciate all those comments, they were informative. Thank you for weighing in and also for the emails. Board, any other comments, discussion? And I see. I'm going to call on Jill McCormick, then Stephanie Monary, then Omar, then Allegria.
I just wanted to say two things, first, I want to publicly acknowledge and appreciate. Our former Cook educators and teachers. And Cook students and the Cook families and community. I think part of the reason why this has taken so long and has been hard and challenging is that there is. A grieving process going on with the closure of that school. And so I, I wholeheartedly appreciate the Cook community. In particular, the ones who have served tirelessly on the merger committee. Since I've been a part of the board. So I'm sure in some ways that feels like too little, too late. But I just wanted to say that, that I acknowledge you, I appreciate you, I'm thankful and grateful that you are there. Were there, are there, and are still there moving forward in this process, because I know you're committed to your community and these kids. The other thing that I wanted to say is, I don't, I don't know if it's the old English teacher in me or what, but I feel. Very strongly that there is a, a lot to a name. And to having a name and to having an identity and to be able to brand yourself. These are very important things, so I agree with. The majority of the speakers that we've heard from tonight and the emails that I've received and I went to a few of those CCLA. Cook merger meetings a couple of years ago before the pandemic. And I really feel like I am very much in support of moving forward, moving forward with this as an action item. Hopefully in our next meeting and officially. Naming the school to the Cesar Chavez Language Academy. So that we can move forward more effectively and. Address the more pressing issues that we need to focus on to really build off the momentum. Of all these people who work so hard in this community and move forward and make CCLA. What is meant to be in our district.
Director Monary.
I'd like to add on, or, I mean, Director McCormick said a lot of what I wanted to say. I just really want to acknowledge and recognize, recognize all the work. From the, the former Cook staff. And especially those who are on the merger committee, it doesn't sound like that was an easy task. For anyone, and I totally hear that that, it hasn't been a, a smooth transition and so. I just really want to let those of you here listening and listening later that, that, that we hear that. And that I hear that and that. There, there is a lot of grieving, I, I, I remember when we had to make that, that decision and I was. We were in the board chamber, at the city council chambers at the time, and I was really visibly upset and it wasn't easy, so. I can't imagine just how many emotions must be going through so many of you. And I just want to really uplift, you know, I really want to, maybe, I don't know if it's uplift or challenge. I'm, I'm really, I really hope that moving forward, we don't look back at Cook. And we say that these are the reasons why we closed the school, because it was a bad school and because those were bad kids and because. You know, all of these narratives that I definitely grew up hearing when I was at Cook, hearing about things that were said about me. And so. It hurts, I, I have to be honest and say that it hurts to hear that. And to hear that those are the reasons why we're justifying closing the, the school and changing the name. And so if anyone's feeling that way, I just want to say that I hear you and I see you. And it's, it's an equity issue, it's a big equity issue how we talk about this, and I just hope that we consider that. I'm, I'm also in favor of bringing this back for an action item and, and I agree that. This is, this is the home of CCLA now, but it was the home of so many others before. Who were also assets to our community and I don't want us to forget that.
Thank you, Director Medina.
Thank you, so I just wanted to kind of clarify, I feel. The school has a name, the school is named Cesar Chavez Language Academy. This is a discussion item and. I don't think it needs to come back. Because what I'm hearing, it would need to be, to come back. To be named what it's already named, I feel that what we need to come out of this discussion. Is direction for the superintendent, if we want it to remain as it is. And we just need to ensure that. The superintendent understands that and then they can move forward with proper signage and stuff, it doesn't, we don't, we don't need to take an action. To remain what actually is now. So, so if Superintendent Trunell could clarify that, that is the case in terms of no need for action, if. The name Cesar Chavez Language Academy is, is what we want. I'd appreciate that clarification, but I would like. Like I said, to honor Mr. Lawrence Cook in some way, and I think. What that way is should come from the school and, and, and I would ask that. Superintendent and direct staff to work with the school community to figure out what they would like to choose. The way to be to honor Mr. Cook. But I think there's so much stuff that needs to be accomplished and needs to be worked on in that school as was stated by some of the speakers. But I think by, by settling this issue. Clarifying that this is the name of the school, I think it takes that, that one additional. Issue off the table, they can move forward with an identity that's solid. So could you clarify that for us Superintendent, that no action is needed to have the name Cesar Chavez Language Academy?
So. Based on direction that I had received previously, the direction was to bring forward a board item. In order to discuss the naming of the merger of Cook and CCLA. And so in that, there is an inherent understanding that there would be some official. Decision or discussion about that official name. To your point, Director Medina, certainly the school existed as CCLA. They were on the Cook Campus as CCLA. Cook, the Cook School was closed, CCLA remained, they've grown their charter, they're now a K eight or a K eight to eight. Charter and that is, that has been their established name. I brought forward this item per the request of the board. For you to consider all of the angles and what you would consider to be a next step. If the board chose to take no action. I think there might be a gray area because you may have to take action to take no action, I'm not certain on that. That's probably getting in very into the weeds. But certainly what I understood was whether there would need to be a naming committee formed. To do this officially or whether there was enough evidence to continue the name of the school at which point. There would be a public hearing to officially do that.
Director De La Cruz, Director Sheffield.
I want to start by just apologizing how I. Described my understanding and I'm really grateful for the grounding and. You know, that Stephanie, Director Mignetti and Director McCormick. Were able to just stay tonight and I'm grateful also for the teachers and the staff at Cook who. Who have made this a merger. It is a merger. So I just really want to apologize for the way that I framed that earlier because it was insensitive and it did not reflect. The history of this process. Also, you know, I, I feel like this was a, this feels like a. We are sliding into a decision because there's not another one. And that, that feels a little wrong, so, but I, but I do like the option of, you know, really making sure that this. This united community stands behind a choice together and has an opportunity to do that, and I feel like that isn't a public hearing. And so it feels like that, that's what needs to happen next. To ensure that there is kind of an opportunity for unified action by this, by this merged school. At this, at this campus, which. You know, is, was Lawrence Cook's campus. So I'm, I'm supportive of an action to rename. And grateful for the time and the energy that folks have put towards truly making this a merger, not a closure and an occupation.
Director Sheffield, then Director Flores.
So much has already been said, but you know, I, I want to. As my colleagues have done, thank the CCLA and Cook families for their patience. Over the past few years, as mentioned in public comment, I did attend a Kinder graduation. Years ago of a student who's now in the fifth grade. The evolution of CCL. Um, the evolution of CCLA and this merger renaming issue has been in consideration for my entire time on the board. Um, I've said plenty in previous meetings and my support of renaming the campus and for all the reasons that my fellow board members have expressed, um. Um, and so I just want to express my support moving forward with the renaming as quickly as we can, um, at the next meeting. Um, also honoring Mr. Cook, his legacy, his family, um, and, um, and, um, really just putting this to bed, um, as it needs to be done. Um, we all know the time is right. We've heard from, from, for years, we've heard from, from family and community. So, um, again, just lending my support, um, and again, thank you, um, family, school, community, friends for your patience.
George Flores.
I, I also like to move forward to, um, the, uh, for the renaming of, um, this campus to CCLA. So, um, with my fellow board members. And I also want to reiterate what they said regarding um, honoring our Cook Middle School, uh, teachers and the school legacy. Uh, I would be remiss also not to mention, you know, and acknowledge our current CCLA teachers as well. Um, I, this has not been an easy sort of, um, transition for anybody, uh, especially with, you know, COVID in the middle. And, um, you know, I, and I want to apologize for how this has been an ongoing issue for, for way too long. So I, I just would love, uh, for us to, to move forward in the next board meeting to make sure that we put this to, um, to a, an action item. Thank you.
And I will add that I think the reason why we need an action item is because we owe it to the, uh, community, um, to the school community. They've been waiting a very long time. And I don't want them to just default into something without board action. Um, I, I agree with Director Medina about the schools choosing how to honor, uh, Mr. Lawrence Cook. Um, and his legacy at that site. I do want to highlight, um, the Cook teachers, uh, President Howell, uh, teacher at Cook comments about the despair that she was feeling and the grief and the aggression. I think she was talking anger and that's concerning. And I will, you know, we continue to support the school. It's a, it's a shining jewel for us. It's a very large school, nine hundred and twenty-six students. If we look down at the enrollment numbers down and further down on the agenda. And I really appreciate everybody at the school, the strong parent community, their new principal, hands full, who's, who's doing her level best, uh, Carolyn Engage. So thank you to her. Um, so let's bring that back to us, uh, at the next meeting for a vote, please superintendent. And I think in terms of public comment, we've heard a lot of public comment. We've, we're open to public comments and we haven't heard much different than what we've heard tonight. Uh, Director Medina.
Thank you. So, um, just to clarify, if it's coming back, um, I, I just want to clarify in terms of what would be the form of it coming back? Would it be like some sort of official resolution declaring CCLA as a name or i- i- in regards to like our policies of naming, would there be some other different procedure? Just kind of want to clarify what, what it coming back means and what that looks like.
For our board policy, Director Medina, it would be a public hearing, uh, with a vote, um, to follow on the name, uh, CCLA.
My thing, yeah, just, just to follow up on that, ju- just because clarifying before, like, our policy on naming. Um, you know, we, we recently dealt with naming on some of their schools and issues. Um, there was a whole process of like some form and a committee and stuff like that. I just want to clarify that doesn't apply to this because it's the existing name, correct?
Correct. If the board were interested in starting a, uh, naming, um, of a facility process, then it would actually begin forms being submitted, et cetera. But in this case, um, that is not the interest or seems to be not the interest of the board. So we would not follow that process.
Thank you.
Director McCormick.
And then just a further clarification, then if, uh, and I, I feel like most of the board feels like this and the, and the community, um, would, are, would we have to go through a similar process if we wanted to name an existing facility on the CCLA campus, um, Lawrence Cook Library or Lawrence Cook Gym or something like that? Or is that um, something that can be dealt with? Is that a board issue or is that more of a site issue that, what's the process on that? Because I think that's important. I, I think we need to keep, not lose that in this process and make, for me, that's kind of part of, I think we need to move forward with the official naming of CCLA, but I also want to make sure that we, um, continue to acknowledge the Lawrence Cook name and community with, uh, another naming somewhere on campus that is appropriate and honorable. So what's the process on that?
We, in our board policy seventy-three-ten, um, it outlines in, uh, the case of memorials, for example. And Mr. Edson is probably more well-versed in this than I am. Uh, but our board policy outlines that the board has the ability to consider uh, the renaming of a facility, uh, such as the library.
Okay. So you can bring that to us next meeting and we also have heard positive um, support for that from public tonight and also from the Cook family, I think.
That is correct.
All right. We're going to close this item. And the last act, the last item for the E item tonight is a discussion also. This is a career technical education update.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I welcome Dr. Armstrong and, um, Ms. Debbie Cardozo, uh, to, uh, move forward and present this item.
Thank you, President Fong, each area trustee, Superintendent Trenell, members and supporters of Santa Rosa City Schools. Good evening. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong and I serve as Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. I would like to present to you tonight under board priority one, life-ready learners, the opportunity to discuss our career technical education program. So we believe in advancement, responsive programming and inclusion. We are about dismantling inequitable systems that have not served our Black and Brown students with fidelity. CTE is a priority and benefits us in Santa Rosa City Schools, which in turn benefits the greater Santa Rosa community. We believe that every single one of our students should have opportunities to earn college credit and/or an industry-recognized certification that leads directly to employment or an articulated college or apprenticeship program. Now, of course, it's about gratitude attitude. And so, you know, I like to celebrate my team and Ed Services as we have a strong, wonderful team. And so the work that Director Cardozo is doing to advance us as a system is noteworthy and I appreciate how aligned we are. She stays steps ahead of me and I admire her commitment to quality. I am confident that her work will move us to a place where we are offering award-winning programs that attract students inside and outside of our community. It is my pleasure to turn this space over to Director Cardozo.
I don't believe she's been brought over yet.
Not over yet. So.
We just moved her over. She should be here in just a moment.
Okay. Cause I can keep talking about her if, you know, we need some, some time to fill the space. Okay. She popped over. So welcome, Director Cardozo. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the nice introduction, Dr. Armstrong. Um, I'd also like to say good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Trenell and members of the board. Tonight, I am very pleased to provide all of you with an update on our CTE programs. Uh, being a former CTE student myself, um, as well as a CTE teacher, this is a passion of mine. And so, um, again, I'm very excited to be here this evening. I'll go ahead and I'll share my screen. Okay. So before I dive into, um, how we're doing with CTE and Santa Rosa City Schools, I thought it would be important to start with the definition of career technical education. And so as you can see on the screen, um, CTE is a program of study that involves a multiple-year sequence of courses that integrates core academic knowledge with technical and occupational knowledge to ultimately provide students with a pathway to post-secondary education and careers. And within CTE, there are elements of a high-quality CTE program that really guide our work. And some of you may be familiar with the eleven elements of a high CTE equal, high-quality CTE program that we've been working under. Um, well, now there's twelve. And the twelve elements are currently operating at the federal level and they haven't been officially adopted by the state. Um, but I wanted to share them with you because the intent is to transition to these twelve e- elements. And they're very similar to the eleven elements, except there is a broader focus looking at K through post-secondary college and career pathways, student-centered delivery of services and promoting equity and access for all students to realize their educational and career aspirations. And included in the board agenda, there is a further, uh, description of these elements, uh, for your review. In a distance, in addition to, excuse me, district funding, uh, we also leverage CTE grant funding to expand, enhance and improve our CTE programs. Um, so we have at the federal level Perkins Funding, at the state level CTE Incentive Grant and Agricultural CTE Incentive Grant Funding, as well as K-12 Strong Workforce Funding. And then at the local level, uh, we have, uh, been blessed with partnerships with the CTE Foundation of Sonoma County, as well as Wonderful Company. And for this school year, we have a little over one point four million dollars uh, to support our programs. And again, that is grant funding and there are some, um, requirements and restrictions around that funding. Um, but again, it's, it's really great to have that, uh, to support, uh, the work that we're doing within our district. Santa Rosa City Schools offers a variety of CTE programs to ensure that students are meeting the workforce needs of local and regional employers to support relevant and meaningful learning experiences for our students and to prepare students for post-secondary education and careers. It's important to note that although there are similarities in some of our programs, um, in some instances, they are very specialized by the courses they offered. And attached to the agenda is a summary of the courses offered in each program. And so, for example, you'll notice that at Elsie Allen High School and at Santa Rosa High School, they both have an agriculture program. However, LC Allen High School has a strong focus in agriculture mechanics. Whereas at Santa Rosa High School, they offer courses in food science and nutrition, environmental horticulture, farm-to-table as a part of their program. And that really complements the school farm that that, uh, facility has, which includes row crops, hops and a three-acre Chardonnay vineyard. Um, and I also wanted to share too that, um, I love our partnership with Kendall Jackson that we have at Santa Rosa High School, uh, the grapes that are grown at our school farm. Um, we do that in partnership with them and then they're actually processed at the SRJC Shone Farm Winery. In addition to the, the programs that you see on the screen, I also wanted to call attention to the Project Make program at Piner High School. Uh, this year I worked at the site to redesign the program so it aligns to the building and construction trades industry sector with an engineering focus to also align to the STEM goals of that site. Tonight, there are two courses in the consent item portion of the agenda for your review and approval related to that program. And looking at our CTE programs, we have currently one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six students enrolled in our courses, uh, throughout our five comprehensive sites. There's a further breakdown on the, as you see on the screen, broken by site as well as demographic data. Um, I also wanted to add as far as demographic data that wasn't available during the, um, at the time when I was creating the presentation, that we also have, um, one percent of our students are classified as migrant education and twelve percent of our CTE students are classified as special education. Career technical student organizations are an important component to our CTE programs and they teach our students leadership skills. And currently we have a very active, uh, FFA programs at Elsie Allen High School and Santa Rosa High School within their ag department. We also have an active SCLA program, which stands for Family, Career and Community Leaders of America at Piner High School. And then we have an active, uh, Skills USA program at Santa Rosa High and Maria Creo High School. And we're looking to expand, um, our CTSO, uh, component of our CTE programs throughout our district as well. Uh, this year we are working on, um, our post-secondary partnerships. Um, so at Piner High School, they have a partnership with Sonoma State University. Um, it's a STEM certificate agreement. And from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, there have been five hundred and eighty students that have earned the STEM certificate at Piner High School. And students that earn the STEM certificate and meet the admission requirements for SSU get priority admission to a non-impacted major in the School of Science and Technology. So that's a really great partnership that we have with Sonoma State. And then, and then at the Santa Rosa Junior College, um, we're working on articulation agreements. And between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty, we have had ninety students earn two hundred and twenty-six SRJC units, um, while enrolled in high school. And this year we are looking at, uh, re-establishing and, um, expanding um, articulation agreements specifically in the area of agriculture, manufacturing, automotive and culinary. And then finally in regards to our partnership with the Santa Rosa Junior College, um, we're also exploring, uh, the development of a dual enrollment opportunity to complement a Sonoma Core program that was piloted or is being piloted at, uh, Piner High School with ten students. Uh, this program is sponsored by the CTE Foundation and provides students the opportunity to learn essential skills and visit industry facilities during their senior year. And then following graduations is a really great component of the program. Uh, those students are placed in an internship. Um, and they're also enrolled in the ninety-nine I, which is an internship class at the SRJC. Um, so it's a really great program. We're looking to expand it to other sites as well. Um, but again, I'm also looking at how we can strengthen our partnership with the JC in this area too. CTE advisories are an integral part of a CTE program and this, the past two years, we currently have been operating under a county-level, um, CTE advisory. And although the county-level work can inform our committee's work, I think it's vital that we have our own district CTE advisory committee. And so I have reached out to, uh, the individuals, the partners that I worked with, um, previously, um, on our CTE advisor committee at the district level, and they are excited, uh, to be a part of this work and to partner with us again. Um, so I'm looking at reinstating that, um, very soon and having our first meeting very soon. Um, and then also working with sites, um, to develop their own CTE advisor committees to inform their work at the local level as well. And some of the partners, just so, so you, um, are aware, uh, where you have, uh, the CTE Foundation, Keysite, Southern, Southern Health and, um, Exchange Bank have already committed. And again, we're looking to expand as well. And then finally, where are we going? So next steps, um, I was able to leverage CTE grant funding to hire point-two, um, CTE toses at each one of our comprehensive sites. Uh, we currently have three hired. We have interviews, uh, next week for the other. Um, and this position will actually facilitate work-based learning opportunities for students enrolled in our CTE programs. Um, this position would also look at supporting implementing a cohesive instructional program and work-based learning. And so I think that there is some work, uh, that we need to do around that as our district. And so I'm excited to have a, a team of, uh, teachers working on this and also working in tandem with our college and career counselors. at each of our sites as well. I also would like to expand industry certification opportunities for our students. Currently, students earn certifications like Surf Safe Food Handlers or OSHA. But I would like to expand that and have more of our programs offer that as an opportunity for students. And I'm really looking forward to working with our district advisory committee to identify those, those types of certifications that are needed and would be helpful for our students to earn while in high school. Another big shift that we're looking at is working with sites to possibly shift some of their programs from a three-core sequence to a more robust two-core sequence. One of the things I noticed when coming back to this position is that due to various reasons, currently some sites are not offering that capstone or that third-year CTE course. And if they are, oftentimes, it's a combination class. And so it's, it's offered in combination with that second year if it's a three-year core sequence. And that's primarily due to low enrollment from what I've seen in the data. The shift, if we were to move towards a two-core sequence and a, in a more robust program offering, would actually provide students access to completing more than one CTE program if their schedule allows. And then also increase the number of CTE completers that we have in our district, which would positively, positively impact our district's college and career readiness indicator score. So I think that there's a lot of positives and it actually goes in alignment with a lot of trends that we're seeing in the county and even throughout the state as well. In addition to that work, I'm in the process of redesigning our, our print materials and, and our CTE outreach websites and just ultimately just trying to build some more awareness around the CTE programs that we offer throughout our district. And also, I think it's important to, to address the misconception that CTE is for students that are not going to college. It really is preparing students to be ready for college and career. And so that's some of the work that we're doing around promotion and outreach within our programs. And then finally, we are working with Karina Healy on the new school model at Elsie Allen High School, which supports creating a dual immersion pipeline, but also strengthening the CTE program offerings at Elsie Allen High School. It's been really exciting. The last couple of weeks, we've been meeting with students and staff to really build that design team. And I'm really looking forward to this work and empowering student voices to again strengthen that Elsie Allen High School and CCLA articulation, as well again, the CTE programs at our site. And with that, I turn it back to President Fang.
Thank you, Debbie Cardozo. And I have followed her career in CTE as a teacher and as a director, then elementary school teacher, and she's just been exemplary. So I echo Dr. Armstrong's praise of our person who is really helping shepherd us through this at our sites and particularly at Elsie Allen High School. And so we're looking forward to that. Folks, we have question time, board. And I'm looking at the hands and the hands I see on my virtual screen with your virtual hand is Director Flores and Director Medina.
Thank you, Press Newfong, and thank you Director Cardozo. I mean, that was a very thorough presentation. So here, my, here are my questions. So if you may not have the answers to these questions, just, just bear with me. In terms of pathway completers, right? Do we have numbers as to how many of those students are currently doing the three core sequence, right? Because that would be interested to find out if, you know, if we switch from a three-core sequence to a two, you know, core sequence, you know, if our numbers actually increase in terms of pathway completers. So that's why, and you know, and I think you don't have that information, so bear with me on this one, because it's just, this is for probably a future sort of board meeting. Also, in terms of the articulator agreements. So these are tests, right? Their students are, the students take after they, they take a course at a high school, right? And then they are given SRJC credits for that course, right? Am I correct on that?
Sorry, it took me a second to unmute. Yes, it's, it's, it could be a variety of ways. So it depends on the articulation agreement. So it could actually be an actual exam or it could be a skill set that they have to demonstrate and show. And so we noticed that there was a decline in articulation agreements during COVID because they weren't able to do the performance aspect of that, that assessment that was required for them to be able to earn college credit. So yes, but it is a culminating activity at the end of that course.
And then is that, is that optional? Or do all students get to take the, the test or the performance skill?
Yes. And so, so the way it would work is, for example, our floral design program at Santa Rosa High School. So their course, all the kids in that course would actually take that credit by exam assessment. And the optional part is if, if a student decides to accept the credit, you know what I mean, or the grade that they earn on that. And so in order to get credit, they need to have either an A or a B on that assessment. And so that's kind of the, the options within that. And if they want to take the C and have that on their record, but maybe, you know what I mean? But not actually earn that kind of official articulation and they can do that. But oftentimes, we just give credit for kids that pass with an A or a B.
Okay. And I think you're going to hate me for this, but one of the things I would love to see, right? So if this is something that is given to all students, you know, how many of those students are actually earning credits, right? Instead of, you know, because the total number you gave was pretty impressive of 226, you know, units. But I'd like to know, you know, in a class, right? Of 30, how many of those students? Or you can aggregate the data by, you know, by school, right? Are actually earning those credits, right? So that way, as a school board, we can start seeing, okay, so what sort of, you know, systemic set of support services can we give or support, right? If that is something that we are going to invest in. So I would love to see that data eventually.
No problem. I can get that for you.
And I want more, so. Yeah, actually, that's it. That's it for, for now. Thank you, Doctor, Director Cardozo.
Maybe someday. Thank you.
Everybody's a doctor.
I'm good. I put my hand down. Director Flores covered.
All right. So no other hands.
Doctor Medina.
Another hands up. Um, I do have a question for you, Director Cardozo. You said we had a hundred, $1.4 million for CTE. Was that this year?
Yes.
And is that more or less than before?
It's a little bit more because one of the grants that is the bulk of the funding is carryover from previous years. And that grant actually ends December 31st of this year. I can give you a complete breakdown of our grant right now. Let me grab my little sheet. I have it here. So for right now, Perkins, we have a little over 166,000 and that ends in May. For our CTE incentive grant funding, we have a little over a million. The bulk of that, about 700,000 and some change, ends December 31st, 2021. And then our K Strong Workforce Grant is a three-year grant. We're currently on year two. But that grants 73,000 and some change. And then our local grants, we have 115,000 from CTE Foundation, one of which is supporting Elsie Allen High School and the new school model, that's 50,000. And then the other portion of that I utilize to leverage our work-based learning coordinators. And then the Wonderful Company ends in December as well, and that's supporting the Piner High School Culinary Program.
I do want to give a shout out to the CTE Foundation in our county, under the direction of Kathy Goodacre and Tony.
Crab.
Crab. Yes, yes. And the Wonderful Company, sounds like a wonderful company, so I just have to say that, but it's culinary. Okay. I hope it has something to do with cookies. All right. Thank you again. We're really pleased that this is under your watch.
I have, I actually have one question that came to me as you guys were talking. Is it, is, can I, can I ask it?
Yes, take on.
So I think this just follows up on our discussion during our last board meeting around the PLA. And I'm wondering if we have any kind of partnerships or intentional partnerships that build the pipeline into, into the labor movement and into membership. So I just, you know, I, that, that is one of the things about some CTE programs is that they're intentionally kind of like anti-union or non-union. And I'm just curious, like, if there's, you know, if we're essentially, you know, agnostic on that and, and include both.
Yeah, great question. And so one of the, when I was originally in this position, I had our CTE advisory committee at the district level. We did have somebody that represented the apprenticeship union. And he unfortunately has retired and has moved on. And so, and so I'm seeking somebody in that area, absolutely. We also, I have a strong relationship with the North Coast Builders Exchange. I served on their, their committee as well. And I know that there has been some changes in leadership there. But one of the things I'm looking to do is to ask if I can get back on their committee again. And then that would also be another pipeline to that as well. So I think that's, that representation is incredibly important.
So thank you for taking the words out of my mouth, Director Allegra. Director Allegra. In terms of, you know, under the PLA agreement, it was very clear that they were going to help talk to whether our kids and bring them in on pre-apprenticeship programs. And so I wanted to know if we have that relationship yet with them, Director.
I, I don't, but I can certainly reach out and establish that, especially since that is an identified need, since my rep is not available. So, so I will take care of that for sure.
All right. We are, I think we're done with this one. Thank you, Director, and
We need public comment.
Why do I keep forgetting that? Sorry. Sorry, public. Public, sorry. It's your turn.
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on item E6, please raise your hands at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Okay, so I didn't hurt anyone's feelings. Okay, that's good. Dr. Armstrong, any other closing remarks for us?
Well, just to reiterate the wonderful job that Director Cardozo is doing and partnering with her, walking through Elsie Allen and pointing out all those opportunities to promote and, and, you know, advertise all the wonderful things happening there has been a treat. And just wanted to emphasize that she's only been back in the CTE role since July 1st. So all these wonderful things that she's talking about, she's been moving. And I just want to recognize and acknowledge her for, for her work and her commitment. But thank you for asking.
All right. Thank you very much. And Superintendent Tronell, any last words on this?
Super appreciate Ms. Cardozo for her presentation. And yes, echoing Dr. Armstrong's sentiments as well. It's been amazing to watch her just pick things up and actually, and, and continue to grow them with the amazing staff that we have and the pathways that we have established. And we'll look forward to creating new ones.
Thank you. We're moving on to the consent items and we're looking for motion to approve consent items two through 10.
I will move that we approve items F2 through 10.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Director McCormick and Director De La Cruz. Can we have that vote, please?
Director McCormick.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
President Fang.
Hi, thank you. We're on the approval of minutes. The approval of minutes of the special board meeting held on October 20th, 2021.
Move to approve the minutes of the special board meeting held on October 20th, 2021.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President McCormick and Director Ed Sheffield.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
Abstain.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
President Fang.
Hi, thank you. G2 is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 27th, 2021.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 27th, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. That was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Clerk Flores.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Medina.
Abstain.
President Fang.
Hi, thank you. That passes. It's approved. Board members, any requests for information? Okay, am I missing any hands? Clerk Flores.
Yes, all right. So I think I already talked to you, well, I don't think. I already talked to our superintendent about this, but I believe we all received the letter from the, from Mary Downey, who is the Secretary of the Sonoma County Committee on District, on school district reorganization. So, and it looks like we, we are in need of a demographer to make sure that we are on cue with the new census data. And I know it's, 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 you know, another district is working on this, but I just like to formally ask for this because time is ticking. And if we don't, I quickly, it'll, we'll, we'll lose our ability to actually have a say in this, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Superintendent Tronell, I do have a request and you can choose the timeline for this. It's not right away. But I just spent four and a half days with the Continuation High School and up in Auburn. And they are part of the Big Picture Learning Consortium. And this actually relates right to our CTE. So Director Cardozo, I hope you're still listening. It has to do with how they are really using their students' interests and getting the kids into internships. And the community has embraced this as well, offering these internships, unpaid internships, where the students get to work in veterinary offices, architecture offices, subway, subway, auto painting, auto mechanics, all kinds of job, job areas where they're really learning on the job. And, you know, it relates to their academics. It relates to job resume and portfolio. And it's a whole pipeline of how to do this. It's very doable for kids, for students, and for schools. And it is really hooking into kids who are not feeling that school is for them. And so these kids are excited and they're going out to work twice a week in the mornings or about, so maybe, maybe six to eight hours a week. And they're pumped, they're jazzed, they're re-engaging in their education and has a lot to do with CTE. It's really woven in to career technical education as well. And it could be something that we go investigate. So it's called big picture learning.
President Fang, did you say that the internships are paid or unpaid?
Mostly unpaid. Once in a while, a shop or somebody will start to pay their, their student. And then several of them are turned into jobs, part-time jobs. And a couple of them are turned into full-time jobs after the students graduate.
Okay, we're clear transparency here. You know, I had a long conversation with Superintendent Tronell about big picture learning. Not too long ago, actually, our, one of our schools in Hillsburg has that. So I just, it's just, you know, very serendipitous that you said this. So thank you, President Huang, for bringing that up.
Ask me about it. I just spent three and a half days with this school. I'm a fan.
I was supposed to go, but you know, they keep canceling our trips.
Okay. All right. All right. Superintendent Trinell, do you have any, any last words for us tonight?
One, just doing due diligence for the 23 participants still with us tonight. Just a reminder that tomorrow, sleep in, enjoy the day, recognize a veteran. And then we'll see everyone back at school on Friday to resume learning. Thank you so much, everyone.
Oh, come on, Superintendent Trinell. You know those folks with kids will not be sleeping in tomorrow. Bouncing off the walls.
Wishful thinking. The kids are back home. Are you going to get PTSD? Director Sheffield?
Yes, I am.
All right, let, let the record show that we are ending this meeting at 8:33 PM. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Veterans Day.